This is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. At 7:00 PM, we call the workshop meeting agenda to order for the Borough of Bloomingdale. First order with the salute to the flag.
With the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Demato?
Here.
Councilman Catalano?
Here.
Councilman Del Ripa?
Here.
Councilman Graziano?
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson?
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert?
Here.
Councilman Yazdi?
Here.
We also have an municipal clerk, Brianna Smith, business administrator, Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney, Dawn Sullivan. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Actually noticed of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12th, 2024. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance, which you enter through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we do not have any non-agenda items tonight. I'd like to motion over early public comment.
Some of...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up. Two agenda items.
You're gonna address the guy now?
Two agenda items, that's on this paper.
Oh, no.
Okay? Next one. Okay. Seeing no one, I have a motion to close. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report of committees. EB?
Mayor, the Senior Center, as always, they, their October calendar is up with the Passaic County Division, the Nutrition Service calendar, and their monthly calendar of events. And they also have their trips that are coming up, and those are located, the sign-up sheets are located in the, at the center. I spoke to Mike about a couple of concerns that they had, you know, with the gazebo, and he's addressing all the questions. And they were, they're looking for the garden, some kind of plantings. And also, if any, they did mention something about some kind of outreach with children, if they wanted to help out seniors in any way. That's something that they wanna give across. And also, their wish to, they're gonna try to come up with some kind of a form letter to put into the bills, because a lot of seniors are not on Facebook, and they don't have access to that. So that's something that going forward, they would like to, with your approval, do. And they're planning on preparing something soon. For the library, Sunday, November 3rd, they have their porch cleaner fundraiser. That is a pretty big one for the Bloomingdale Foundation for Literacy, $55 a person. And you could bring your own snacks and beverages to the Bloomingdale Fireman's Hall. As always, they have a lot of crafts for children and adults, and everything is online. They're coming, they also have a cookbook club that meets October, Wednesday, October 23rd, at 7:00 PM. And this meeting is gonna be held at the Senior Center. There is also a ABC Murder Book Club, October 15th, 6:45, the book is Homecoming again. And also, there's Storytime scheduled for children, which started up again in the beginning of the school year. Baby time, Storytime is from 0 to 2 years old. Then there's a 4:00 PM book time, ages 2 to 5. And there's a playtime scheduled Tuesdays at 10:30 AM and Saturday Storytimes, which is the fourth Saturday of the month, starting at 10:30. That's for the library. And, you know, I also mentioned that they had their new, they want the children to be supervised, which is something that I mentioned last time, that still holds true. I don't have numbers from Tri-Borough for September yet, but as always, they have, they do, if you did need any kind of medical equipment, that you could give them a call, 973-838-1688, and they could help you with any medical equipment to share, and that you need to return.
Okay. Nothing here. We're good. For sure?
Yeah, nothing I can share.
Okay, public events, Saturday, October 19th is Expedition Bloomingdale, the town scavenger hunt, 9:30 AM at Sloan Park, which John, I'm hoping you're giving a little bit more information on. November 11th, which is Monday, is our Veterans Day Ceremony, 11:00 AM at Sloan Park. I want to thank Bree and some of our surrounding towns that joined us in the proclamation for ovarian cancer awareness. I did wanna read this. "The month is for all those who are battling ovarian cancer, who have lost their lives to the disease, their loved ones, and our state's many dedicated healthcare workers in spreading awareness, committing to public education and embracing hope for better diagnoses, treatments, and cures." We have gotten a great response from some of the surrounding towns that have also done the same proclamation that we had, and I wanna thank you, Bree, for spreading the word to Passaic County. That was wonderful. Also, October 1st, today, starts Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an international health campaign that's held every October. The month aims to promote screening and prevention of the disease, which affects 2.3 million women worldwide. Known best for its pink theme, color of the month features a number of campaigns and programs conducted by groups ranging from breast cancer advocacy organizations to local community organizations to major retailers. They are aimed at supporting people diagnosed with breast cancer, including those with metastatic breast cancer, educating people about breast cancer risk factors, encouraging women to go for regular breast cancer screening, starting at the age of 40 or earlier. Breast cancer screening is also, that is doing blood tests along with your regular, whether that's an MRI or other forms of breast cancer screening, and also fundraising for breast cancer research. October 19th is our confidential shredding, that's 8:00 AM at the Senior Center parking lot. October 14th, Borough is closed for Columbus Day, that is no DPW pickup, and all Borough offices are closed. We have a skin cancer screening, October 9th, that is Wednesday through Paquonic, that is here at the Fireman's Hall. If you have any interest, you can just go to our website, there is a flyer there. You can click on the flyer, and there's QR codes that you can sign up, or you can call the number on the flyer and sign up for a time then. Hydrant Flushing is also continuing throughout the Borough through October 16th. If you wanna know which days that your street is on, you can go to our website main page, go to announcements, and you will find the Hydrant Flushing program days there. John, I did make a note, can you talk about the Fire Department open house?
Yes.
And also, our auxiliary, the Fire Department Auxiliary is still running the T-shirt fundraiser. You can go to the Facebook page for the Auxiliary, and there is a link there. You click on the link, and it's super easy to order, they're doing T-shirts, long sleeve, regular sweatshirts, and hooded sweatshirts. And it's a great fundraiser, because everything that we do for the Auxiliary supports our Fire Department directly. Done.
Okay. John?
Okay, so I'll touch on Expedition Bloomingdale. For that, that's sponsored by the Economic Development Commission, and it's a scavenger hunt, where it takes you around town to about nine locations, I believe. Each one has a clue, you have to take a picture with your team with the clue, and if you get all of them, you come back, and if you're in the top three, meaning the first, second, or third finish, you get a, it's a donated item from some of our businesses, like a $50 gift certificate, right? Things like that. That's what's being awarded as the prize. You do have to sign up beforehand, it's a team event, not really just a one-person thing, so you need a couple of people to sign up. Right now, the signups are a little low, so we will have to cancel. We don't get a couple more before the day. So encourage everyone to spread the word, let people know about it. It's good for different organizations, team buildings, things like that as well. It should be a really fun day, there's some creative clues, it should only take you probably no more than an hour or two, depending on how quick you are in guessing what the clues are. But I wanna thank the EDC for putting that on, a lot of thought into that one, and hopefully can get some more signups. Yeah, the other one is a thank you for Celebration Day, also from the EDC. So a lot of planning and thought went into that, wanna thank the DPW. I know Frank himself was out there helping to direct traffic at one point, which was really useful and very helpful. The Police Department did a great job, we had volunteers from high school. I wanna thank some of the folks up here, I know helped out in various different ways, the 5K was phenomenal as well. It was a good day, and I really wanna thank everybody for everything they did, helped contribute to it. And then the last thing, I had mentioned that there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Creos, it's the new restaurant on Main Street. We're pushing that back, it was gonna be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. We're working with them, I don't think they're quite ready yet. So it might go into November, I'll keep you all apprised as we figure out what the day and time is gonna be.
So it's not the 27th, then?
Correct. Not the 27th.
Okay. More to come on that.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay? Good?
Yep.
Anybody? Nothing to read, sir?
Just two short comments. So one, Environmental Committee, we'll be meeting tomorrow. Just to reiterate, Celebration Day really was an excellent event. I know they put together a great table, talking about stormwater runoff, we had the honeybees, the kids were really enjoying it. Rec did a great job, I know a lot of pumpkins were decorated, they accidentally did the box out, which was excellent. And then, just on our consent agenda tonight, I know Rec, we're really excited that we have the installation of the adult exercise equipment going in.
That's starting?
Yep. That is, it's a quick synopsis until the end of the month.
I'm assuming basketball signups are coming up shortly?
They will be shortly, yes. They started.
They started?
Yeah, I saw an email for it. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just wanna say, you know, I've done the Bob Koschka run a couple years in a row, but this year I did it for my neighbor Margaret Colanco, and I know there were other teams, but I really appreciate you did, the Bob Koschka did give her a check, and that was very generous. And also, something that I forgot to mention, there is another with BBYC, they have a paint fusion art event, which is another porch sign. That's October 17th from 6 to 8 at St. Anthony's. It's also, it's $55 per person, or $60, and it'll include pizza. They also have, with the, in regards to October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, for the pep rally, I mean, the pep rally was September 5th, on October 26th is the homecoming game, and it is a pinkout. And then November 9th is the salute to the flags, and it's a patriotic game. And then there's also a clothing drive that they're doing to collect items for BBYC. The location of the event is at the BBYC Uniform Shed in Richard Butler Parking Lot, Pearl Place. It's Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00. It's a clothing and shoe fund drive, so if you have any types of clothing that are used, wearable clothing items, blankets, pillows, red sheets, if you're doing any kind of spring cleaning, toys, making room for Christmas, this is a good place to drop 'em off, which is October 26th at the BBYC Uniform Shed, Richard Butler Parking Lot, 9:00 to 12:00.
Okay, so now you went twice, so next month, we're gonna skip one. Mike?
Hello, Mayor.
Bree?
No report. No report this evening, Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of things with me. The Bob Koschka thing worked really well, we had 167 participants. Just for me personally, we had three families that were devastated by pancreatic cancer who participated in our event this year. It just tells me that the disease is out there, it's still there. It always seems to be, every year, when we get involved, we have people locally that are affected by this. And I'm pretty proud of the Fire Department and all the help it got, the ladies, Auxiliary, the police, the DPW, to help me put that event together, and it's really for a great cause. And I know the Koschka family really appreciates it. She tells me every year that, you know, we started 11 years ago, figuring, let's see how far this is gonna go. It's 11 years later, and we're probably gonna be about $120,000 donated in 11 years from a small community, which is fantastic. The other thing that's happening for Fire Prevention Week is next week for the kids. The Fire Department will be visiting the schools, I believe, on Wednesday, and the daycare centers to let the kids look at the trucks. We're also having an open house on October 11th, 5 to 8 o'clock, I believe it is. And they're gonna have the trucks out here, the antiques, so the kids can come down and look at the trucks, and, you know, go on them, and they're gonna have snacks and refreshments for the kids. So it'll be an event, they're gonna have some demonstrations going on, and it's gonna be held here behind Fireman's Hall in this firehouse, which is Station 2. So that'll be a nice event on next Friday night for the kids. The other thing I'm really proud to say, for us as a borough, we finally got the final award for the Green Acres, $750,000 to Dubo Pond, going along with the approximately $500,000 for the open space. So that will be an early spring project. There's some paperwork that we have to file and get in on time, I think it's by November 12th.
In November, something like that.
November there, to follow through with this. But this is, I believe, the biggest grant that our town has ever received, and we're gonna get a brand-new stadia art playground at Dubo Pond, which is going to be great. And we picked out all, Mike actually met with the vendor, right? And we know what it's going to look like. Dominic will be happy, it's gonna have to have the rubber floor with that for the kids, so if all they don't get hurt, it'll be fenced in, which is all part of the Green Acres process. So that is a great thing for our town, to get a brand-new park, it's the one we have up there that's over 30 years old. One thing I will say, the gazebo that's in the center, we'll be staying, we dedicate that to a child on Sandra Lane. So that is huge for us. So I'd like to thank, you know, Mike, Bree, for making a ton of phone calls to follow up with everything there, and we hired a grant company, which paid off.
And the other $500,000 you mentioned, it's all grants from?
Open space, open space from the county. So between the county and Green Acres, this will cost the Borough of Bloomingdale taxpayers zero.
For 1.25 million?
For 1.25 million.
Project.
Project.
Much needed.
Yes.
Playground's all.
And playgrounds are expensive. I mean, it's, you think of a slide, you forget the slide. It has to be safety, it has to be ADA accessible, there's a lot of things involved that you have to follow being on Green Acres, so anybody will be able to use this park, no matter, no matter what. All right? And it ties into what's there with the benches and the picnic tables we already put in, so it should be a great area for our young ones to go hang out and with their family, so that's fantastic. Okay, okay. All right. Resolution number 2024, 10 dot 1, Consent Agenda, to have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any questions?
Just one, so 10 dot 12, vehicle, just curious really. We have, what's the intent for that? Who's gonna use it? It's gonna be DPW, or?
Police.
Oh, police?
It's one that we confiscated and rate, and if it gets adjudicated in court, the $700 payout, we can get it, and use it as an upmarket car going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious what we'd be using in court. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
This is for all, every, all of them?
Yes.
1 through 12.
1 through 12. We do this pretty much at every meeting.
Okay.
We can pull one if you need to.
You can say all other than?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just the...
Maybe we've had this since Friday, so if you had any questions, Mike could have answered.
Yeah, I know. It's just, just everything, yes, except I.
That's interesting. Okay.
I just need to know, are you abstaining from that?
Abstaining, or is it a no?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Number nine, pending items, second final reading, public hearing, ordinance number 17 dash 2024, accepting the dedication of Holster Court.
I didn't hear a read vote.
Yeah, it's a, I'm a yes on all of them.
Yeah, I thought you voted.
I thought I missed something.
Okay? I thought you voted.
Sorry, I was right.
Let me get a question.
We're good, we're good.
Okay. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News. Copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
You have a motion to read by title?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, accepting the dedication of Holster Court.
Okay, you have a motion, open up public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up. Seeing no one, a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption? So move?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any new business, a motion, open up, late public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sean Hoyer, I live 125 Runwall Avenue.
I wouldn't know you.
I went to do a cable vision.
Yes, you did. That's all right, that's a long time ago, yes.
My name is Sean Hoyer, and I've called Bloomingdale my home for 42 years. On May 2nd of this year, my mother of 82 years did something incredible. She opened the door of her home to a father and son who thought, who she thought needed help. James McBride, a 61-year-old Army vet, and my mother were coworkers, they were friends. But all that changed when James McBride decided to abuse the privilege of my mother's kindness and use a loophole in the system to invade our home. This was supposed to be a short two-week stay, and now has become four months. We have squatters in our community, they reside in my home, and they have no intention to leave. And he does, he doesn't have to become, he doesn't have to, because the law of this state protects him and his 22-year-old son, Killian. He has not paid anything, and he is living rent-free. As my mother and I live in fear of what he might do, James has disgraced, disregarded our wishes to leave and has claimed squatter's rights. My mother doesn't know how to use a Blu-ray or text message, and she sure doesn't know anything about landlord-tenant code, but somehow the law believes that she has abused the right of James and Killian illegally occupying our homes. And we now can conclude that this man baited my mother from the best of... Nervous.
Okay.
My name is Patrick Lewis, I live in Lake Park. I've known the lawyer for 32 years, and I've been in this house twice now since this happened. His brother in Texas contacted me last week to tell me this was happening, I just found out. What he says is true, I've never seen anything like it. This man is a squatter. I feel it's important to come here today to tell you, this man isn't just a squatter, he's also driving your children to school every morning and home at night. He works at Durkens Bus.
Durkens Distribution.
Durkens distribution. I have successfully filed this summons with Patterson Court Clerk for a writ of summary to take back possession, and that's been a court date. Highly confident I will get this judge to agree with me that this man is a bad trespasser. I was able to do this with the help of my property manager, Jude Florrie, over at Bearden Brook Gardens. She was able to navigate me through this when I went there. These two are literally doing exactly what they said. They are living in a tiny bedroom, no bed, and a dog.
And they're coojo.
And they are not leaving. I've never seen anything like it, I've heard squatter's rights. They are actually claiming illegal tenants in this man's house. This man cannot leave his home, this woman is 82 years old, she's not eating, she's exhibiting signs of adult failure to thrive. She's out of her normal routine, she's not eating, she's not going to the beauty parlor, she's not getting her hair done. She's getting massively depressed. So I want to bring awareness to this council, we have a squatter. This is a tremendous opportunity to show any squatter fitting into this area, what you think of it, I would ask the community to be aware that you follow up with this family, and that you reach out to this family to give them any type of assistance. We have a court date of the 21st, and I'm confident we will get this man trespass.
Just let me just ask you a couple of questions, 'cause first, obviously, if we're hearing it, have you?
I just wanted to correct, I wasn't made aware of that in the short conversation.
That's why we're here to figure.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys being here.
Have you spoke to our PD?
If I may, I've never seen anything like this either. He did, he was desperate, he did not know what to do. He started to bang pots and pans a few weeks ago. The police came, favored the transient, and gave him the homeowner a public disorderly ticket, which he now has to fight. The cop said there's nothing they can do. And that was Officer Dowski?
Uh, Moore, it was Moore. Okay. He means, said he was gonna send it in mail and threatened to arrest me if he had to come back.
Okay, well, let me just follow up with that, 'cause I'll just wanna get...
I'm your counsel for the ticket.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's, I can't do anything, obviously, we can't do anything about that.
No, no, I'm...
It just frustrates me, what your mom's going through at 82, that the law protects the person there, it doesn't protect your mom.
That's why you...
Now, I don't know what the law is, 'cause obviously, that's not what we do.
No, I understand.
So...
They know the law very well, they don't...
It sounds like it.
Yes.
Do me a favor, give me your contact number, and let me, I don't know what I, if we can do anything as a council, but be made aware of what's going on.
So the town knows, so this doesn't happen to someone else, because people are getting older, he just creeped right in.
Okay, let me just...
And you live there as well?
Yes.
I'm the homeowner, not my mother. I'm the homeowner, he made the deal to talk, talk to my mother, a verbal agreement, there's no written...
So you're the owner of the home?
Yes.
And your mom let them in, who's not the owner?
Yes, correct.
So you didn't give them permission?
I gave my, I said to my mother, yes, they can stay. My mother gave them permission.
Under the guise of two weeks verbal agreement.
Okay. But it's verbal.
Verbal agreement, yes.
Which really probably has no weight, because it's verbal, not written.
You would be surprised.
You'd be surprised, yeah.
Okay, so I don't wanna get in the legal side of it, 'cause obviously, we don't know that. I'm glad you made us aware of it. I'm not promising anything what I can do, I do wanna have a conversation, and then, here, give me your...
If you wanna write your contact.
Write your stuff down.
Thank you, sir.
And I will call you with whatever I can find out, like I said, good or bad.
Not a problem.
But I will follow up.
I sincerely appreciate your time.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, thanks for letting us know, good luck on the 21st.
It was the only thing I could tell them to do.
And put your address down there too, so I know.
I'm not saying that, who said county? So, I don't know, evidently, you remember me, you were the one who showed me my home?
How long have they been living there?
They've been there for 16 weeks now, or about six weeks. We figured he'd save enough for a deposit on the down payment of the house, probably about $10,000, $12,000 under their house, and then one dime. They never asked for a dime, they never had a covenant of agreement, which is a lack of charity and contrition. And then, when it starts to get hairy, where it is enough, these two weeks, Mr. Hoyer said, I have enough, get out, and that is when he said, we are tenants, we are not leaving.
He's gainfully employed. He's got two jobs. Two jobs.
Like I said, I...
Just so the community knows, that's all, what this is about.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean.
Anyone else? Seeing no more, a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we do not have an executive session tonight. Our next meeting will be October 15th, 7:00 PM right here. Have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.